Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Finchen.
Here.
We do have a forum and can perform the business of the city of Newport. Next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. You've had a chance to go over those. We entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion then to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of March 14th as presented. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of "I."
"I."
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item is proclamations and recognition of citizens by the mayor. I have one piece of information I'd like to read for you. It was a card that I received actually a couple of weeks ago, but I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I'll do it today. We've got two words for you. It says, "Thank you for doing what you do, for being who you are, for giving us so many reasons to be glad there's you." Newport Mayor and Alderman, we would like to thank the board for your support in the new animal control building. We'd also be able to do what we would not be able to do what we do for the animals in our community without the support of people like you. Newport Animal Control Staff, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to?
Mayor, I would like to remind the board and everyone, this week is National Telecommunicator Week, so we must remember the people that dispatch the calls and everything. These people deal with a lot of stressful situations, just like our police officers and everyone else, so keep those people in your prayer. Thank you.
Mayor, child abuse awareness is at the City Park Friday from 4:00 to 7:00. So anybody can go over and support that. It would be great to appreciate that, Department of Children's Services.
Mayor, this first one they've had since COVID, so they've just got it started back.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Item five, communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Finchen.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing, of course, we have included in your packet, the proposed budget for '23, '24 fiscal year. We want you to, at your leisure, look it over. We've included a breakdown in the front, as always, explaining any differences or big expenditures. And we'll have it on the agenda in May for the first reading, as is traditional, to stay on schedule. And if you have any questions, be sure to contact myself, or Tina, or one of the department heads if you're wanting more in-depth information about something that pertains to their department. So we are on schedule to have our budget ready and for you all to consider in a timely fashion. On the same kind of note, the audit for last year. Our audit is running late by no cause of our own. We, because of the unique circumstance that we're in, as being the owner of the grammar school and technically the owner of the utility company, their audits, as you all know, are always incorporated into ours. And so it has to be submitted as one audit to the state. And so we finally got the information from NU on theirs, and we're still waiting, well, not us, but our auditors are still waiting on some information from the grammar school. And so our audit is officially late, as it has been a time or two in the past, for the same reason. We've gotten kind of, not really dirty letters, but we've gotten put on notice by the comptroller's office. And we had a call today from the Department of Education because they use that data. We've had contact from some of our grant monies where that's not been done in a timely fashion, but, you know, it's beyond our control. We, our stuff's ready. Our stuff's in, as always, but it can't, it all has to go in together. And so until they get, and see what you get into now is, you know, our auditors, you know, they don't just do audits. You know, they're account, they're an accounting firm. So when you get into March and April, they're focused on income taxes. And so they tell you plain, you know, we, they come in here in the fall, they come in like in January, February, and get our information because they want to try to get everything good to go before tax season starts because then they are just covered up, they're swamped with taxes. And so if NU or NGS does not get their stuff in in a timely fashion, then the audit does not get done on time. And we've been victimized by this repeatedly. And, you know, when that happens, it's like anything. You know, the auditors get aggravated, the state gets aggravated, and we get aggravated because we're being held hostage by somebody else that's beyond our control. You know, all Tina can do is keep requesting, keep requesting, keep requesting to get that information in to the auditors. And that's all we can do, you know. We don't have any, even though we own both entities, we have no direct power or control over them. And, you know, if they lag and drag their feet on stuff, they're just, we have no recourse. There's nothing we can do. We can't go jump on anybody. We can't, you know, we can't ride anybody up. We can't, there's nothing we can do but keep complaining about it. And so we've been doing that, but till we, till the auditors, and they, you know, even if they get it right now until April 15th, which is quickly approaching now, today's the 11th. Till April 15th, they won't touch it. They'll be on, they'll be on tax duty. And so hopefully, maybe the grammar school will have in whatever it is they need by then, and then they can switch their focus back to audits and off of income taxes. But we're, we're getting kind of bombarded, like it's almost on a daily basis, last two or three days, from different entities complaining because our audit is not posted online. Because the comptroller's office, as soon as our audit is in and they've approved it, they post it online. And that way, every other entity that needs access to it is able to do that on that website. And when they go to that website, just like the guy that we talked to today from the Department of Education, you know, they go to that website and it's not there, then they call us and want to know why. And so I spoke with him, and then he also spoke with Tina today when he called in. And so I, you know, I debated bringing it up tonight, but the more I thought about it, especially since we've got hit in the last week quite a bit about it, I felt like it probably best for y'all to be aware of it. Because, you know, you never know when one of them might call you all, and I wouldn't want y'all to be in the dark about it. And so that's the deal. If you were to get a call from somebody, you know, we've done all we can do. And our stuff's there, the auditor has all our stuff and has had our stuff in a timely manner. But, you know, as always, we're at the mercy of others. Now, I've mentioned before, and I, you know, and I, we, you know, we never pushed either one of those to do anything as far as who they do their services with. But when the utility company had the same auditors as us, we never had this problem. And ever since, they decided to go in a different direction and change auditors, we've had this problem every year pretty much since. Now, I don't know if that would change if they decide, I've mentioned this to them. "Oh, we were real happy with our auditors." Well, you may be, but it's causing us problems. And so, you know, I don't want to sound like, well, I'm trying to get, you know, Brown, Jake, and McDaniel business. They used to do the utility company. And when they did, we never had this problem. But now it's every year, they drag their feet to get the audit done. And I know they went through this investigation, and I know that it was, everything was haywire for years, but now we're supposed to be beyond that. That's supposed to be in the rearview mirror now. But it's the same song and dance again this year that it's been during this three-year investigation. And so, you know, it's, it makes us look bad at the state level because they, they look at us, you know, they're, they're used to most cities running their, they run everything. They don't do, and I'm not trying to say we need to change, I'm just explaining. Most cities that have a school, most cities that have the utilities, they run them as a department, just like we run the police department, the fire department. It's just, they are just departments of the city. And so they can call the city and prod them and get them moving and get things done. We don't have that situation. Yeah, we, on paper, we own it, but we have no control over it. And so, but they still, they don't call the grammar school and fuss at them. They don't call the utility company and fuss at them. They call Tina and I and fuss at us, want to know why our stuff is not in. And it's not our stuff. It's tied to us, but it is not our stuff. We have no control over it. So that's enough whining. But I just, I felt like that y'all need to be made aware of the situation because it's frustrating to us because we take great pride just in getting this proposed budget after you guys every year in a timely fashion so that we're always on time with the budget. Forever and ever, our budget was never done on time. And we strive to keep our record straight to where the budget's done on time, the audit's done on time, the audit's clean. We work extremely hard and diligent, and the department heads do too, on having a clean audit every year. Everything we do, we look at sideways to make sure that it won't create a problem in the audit. Because we take such pride in having a clean audit. And so, you know, it really irks me that we've got all these entities now calling and complaining like we're not doing our job, but it's not us. And I guess I just wanted to vent a little bit, but I wanted to make y'all aware of it too, in case word somehow gets to you all, why is the audit not online? Because lots of folks look at it. I know, you know, there's lots of, even folks that's not from here will get online just out of curiosity and look at different audits from different places. And so when I, when yours is not on there, they notice it. And so you never know when some citizen may look on there and not see it and then ask one of you guys, "Why is your audit not online? I went to look at it and it's not on there." So now you know the answer, if that happens. And it could happen because, like I say, there's lots of public folks that like to look at it online. All right, moving on. This past month, I don't know, the sewer gods were down on us or something. We had, the first, we had a problem at the Tanner Building. The sewer got blocked and backed up into the building again. We had, the bathrooms were shut down. Of course, with the water state there, that don't, that can't, that can't be. So I had to declare an emergency, and it was, when we evaluated, it was more than our people could do, it was more than a plumber could do. It was going to require major work. And so we did get it open. We're still waiting on Brockwell to come and dig it all out and redo it. But we did get it open. Rick Vassar worked up our half a day and finally managed to get it unclogged and get it open. But we've got to fix it. We've got to fix that problem. And lo and behold, the same day, we had the same problem here. But we had half, we had half the bathrooms were working and half of them were knocked. And we had a clog. And Vassar had to come when he left the Tanner Building. He come down here and worked till dark and then come back the next morning and finally got it open. But we're going to have to dig out out here and put in a different cleanout system. It only goes in one direction, and it's in the middle, and it only comes back towards the building. And we need to be able to go in either direction because the clog was beyond that point. And we had a hard time getting to it to unclog it. But both of them were caused by similar problems, stuff being flushed down the toilet that shouldn't be. And how you break people from that, I don't know. We put signs up, we've done everything, and it's just ignored. But just to bring you up to speed on, people get it on the record, y'all already knew about the Tanner. But just to get it on the record, I had to, again, it seemed like this should get to be a monthly routine that I had to declare an emergency about something, but keeping those bathrooms open at Tanner Building, I can't, we can't wait on. So I had, once again, I had to declare an emergency. Finally, on a lighter note, on the April the 29th, I mentioned last month that we were looking at doing a cleanup with the county and keep Cock County beautiful. And on the 29th of this month, that's, if weather works with us, that's going to happen. We're going to have our litter crew out on that Saturday, working in town. The county's going to be working out in the county, and then the, and that's through the Cock County Insurance Department. And keep Cock County beautiful is just going to be kind of in the middle, I guess. I don't know. They're going to be bringing a lot of the stuff and helping coordinate it. But we had our own cleanup a couple of weeks ago. There's a report in your book on that. It was very successful, and we cleaned up all the main highways in town and got things looking better already. But this is going to be a joint effort on the 29th. In case anybody's bored and wants to come in and pick up a little trash, you're more than welcome to come and participate. But that's about it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of board, commissions, and committees. Do we have anything to report? Mr. Carver? Item seven is reports from committee members of council and other officers. Does council have anything going on to report? No? All right, moving on. Item A, old business and unfinished business. Item A, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2023-03, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And yes, Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023 for Newport Grammar School.
Council, you've heard the reading of the ordinance, for the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-03, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It has been properly seconded. I think we need a roll call, Tina.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Your motion approved. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-04, amending the municipal code Title VIII, alcoholic beverages adding outdoor serving area in C-1 Zone Regulations.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-04, an ordinance amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, Chapter 4, Permits, Section 4-412, adding six outdoor serving area in C-1 Zone Regulation.
Do you have?
I'm just here if there are any questions.
Okay. So council, you've heard the reading of the ordinance, for the board's pleasure?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve ordinance number 2023-04, amending the municipal code Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, adding outdoor serving area in C-1 Zone Regulations. Roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
No.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
No.
Three to two. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-05, amending the zoning map to include properties off Highway 73.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Newport to include properties on Highway 73 and Sierra Road in the M-1 Zone.
Okay. You've heard the reading of the ordinance caption. What's the board's pleasure, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-05, amending the zoning map to include properties off Highway 73. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-06, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2023-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023 for Newport Grammar School.
Okay. Heard the reading of the ordinance, for the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. So I'll say.
We have a motion then on the board to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-06, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It's been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-07, amending the zoning map to rezone Sequoia Drive.
This is a piece of residential property that is, it fronts Sequoia Drive. It is next to commercial property, which is, if you, it crosses the street from KFC pretty much. The, the new owners are requesting this, well, the current owners are requesting this so that the sale can go through, but this is, this is heard by the planning commission. They sent it forward with a favorable recommendation, and this is what makes the Zaxby's project happen.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Newport from R-1 residential to C-2 commercial located at 108 West Sequoia Drive.
Okay. You've heard, council's heard the reading of the ordinance, for the board's pleasure?
Gary, does this have any effect on any residential areas in that area? The, okay. The only person that reached out was the daughter of the person, the lady that is the next piece of property up with some, she said she was behind it. She just wanted to, just an elderly lady, and just wanted to ask for privacy, you know, if they could do privacy fence about the lighting, the stormwater, which is all things that I've spoken with their engineers about, and it's stuff that we'll address through the, through the process of the permitting and the approvals and whatnot. So if you don't do it right, yeah, you can negatively affect your residential, but the only, the, the one person that has reached out, then we've kind of given some assurances that we'll work with the, we'll work with the contractors and the, and the people that are designing it during the process to so we can mitigate and maybe even completely prevent some of the things that she was concerned about.
Gary, is this the property that's our next to commercial bank?
Across the, on the other side of the highway.
Across the street.
Oh, it's a marathon recently, yeah. They dug the fuel takeout. Yes.
So is that going to be Zaxby's or where the?
It's that piece of property. It's every, it's the old AZ rental building. Is it Town and Country? Town and Country Drug Stays, and then there's the residential lot behind it, which is what we're rezoning. That's their footprint.
Okay. So that's where Zaxby's is going?
Yes, sir.
Not where the Locker Red and Roundtown Restaurant?
No. They've demoed that at our persistence and requests. I don't, I don't think, they, I've had people reach out to that gentleman to purchase. He's not sold yet that I'm aware of, and I don't know what his plan is for it.
Thank you.
Same area, just not that specific piece of property.
Are there any other questions? Board? Okay. You've heard the reading of the ordinance, what's your board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of resolution number 2023-07, amending the zoning map to rezone Sequoia Drive. It has been properly seconded. We have a roll call, Tina.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item C, consideration of resolution number 2023-02, authorizing the city of Newport to begin the process of becoming a Tennessee Main Street community.
Okay. So there are a number of Tennessee Main Street communities. There are smaller number of national Main Street communities in Tennessee, so this is a local program. There are certain, it's like at the downtowns, there are certain things you have to do to be accepted in. And I know that right now, if you, if it does, the yacht test would tell you that maybe we're not ready for Main Street, but with all the new investment we've got coming, with all of the grant money that's going into downtown, with all the infrastructure improvements we've already made, which is sort of what got a lot of this private investment to happen, we're going to be a showcase downtown. I know it. So this will start this process. It gets us eligible for facade grants, rehab grants, things that aren't available to us now just being a Tennessee downtowns program. But to become a Main Street community, you then open yourself up to better grant funding, a lot of other programs, and programs that aid us in to, you know, building rehab, infrastructure improvement, things that really bring downtowns back to life. So I'm asking for, this isn't the official resolution that they need probably down the line. I'm just, this is sort of, I'm asking for a vote, a resolution and a vote so that we can begin this process and take the first step forward because within the next five years, I think we're going to have a completely different downtown. And it's only taken seven to get here, so. It's painful, it takes that much time without, you know, just one big sweep, one big fat paycheck, one big donor or benefactor writing a check, but sometimes you got to go slow and use grants, but it's starting to come together.
You don't read that into the caption?
No.
Okay. We have a consideration of resolution number 2023-02, authorizing the city of Newport to begin the process of becoming Tennessee Main Street community. Gary's out, asking for authorization to start the process.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve that process. Mr. Carver, it has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of "I."
"I."
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration of repair to Rocky Top Graphics Building.
If y'all remember last month, we, we talked about this. When we turned, you know, after the gun battle we had over there with the subject on, I forget the date now, but where there was extensive damage, several bullets struck the building, 11 or 12 bullets rounds hit the building, and of course, went through the glass, through the doors, and hit everything in the store, I believe. But we tried to submit that to our insurance, and the insurance denied the claims, said they did not cover losses such as that. As I mentioned last time, you know, we can take a weed eater and sling a rock through a wind and they'll pay for it, but you shoot a bullet through a wind and they will not. So they have their reasoning behind that policy, but that is their policy. So they have their reasoning behind that policy, but that is their policy. And so sadly, it falls upon us to repair the damage.
And Jeff's insurance company wouldn't cover anything?
I mean, you know, we didn't approach that with him. We're responsible for the damage, and I did not try to get him to do that. I mean, you know, it's, it's no fault to him that this happened. And so I was not comfortable asking him to turn that into his insurance after we did, you know, because we did. And I wouldn't do that. We've never done that to anybody, ask them to turn damage that we've done to their property. We've never asked anyone to turn it in on their insurance. We've always stood responsible for it. I feel like that's, that's our obligation. Now, if you all say do that, I will absolutely carry out your wishes. But, but I myself, that was the way I looked at it. I did not, I've had other people, folks not on the board, ask me that question, you know, did he turn it into his insurance? I never asked him that question because I didn't feel like it was my place to suggest that. And if I asked that question, I felt like I was suggesting that. And so, you know, we did it. It's our obligation, and I wasn't comfortable doing that. But now, if the board says do that, I will absolutely do it.
All right, any other questions? All right, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, I guess James, the total amount was, what, $10,594.91?
Yes, sir.
All right, the consideration of repair to Rocky Top Graphics Building in the amount of $10,594.91, you have, we need to have a motion on the board to approve. We need, and it's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And ayes like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Consideration of adding a name to a certificate of compliance for Lex Wine and Spirits.
We had, we've had a request, you know, a couple months or so ago, I don't remember if it was the last meeting or the prior, you all approved allowing the process to change owners of a local liquor store to move forward and be sent on to the state. And that's all we do. We don't approve or deny. We just say that they can apply to the state. And once that had, we had done that, the these folks came back and wanted to add a name to that application, which we, you know, we can't just do that. It has to come back through the process for you guys to add a name on to that application if you so choose. And so we just informed them that we gotta come back to square one if that's what, if we want to change the names on the application. So that's where we are.
Are any of the representatives here? Which, which one are you on the, are you the new applicant?
Yes, I'm the new. The previous one was my wife. So I think the state has changed the laws. Each family can get just two license mags. And we did not know, we can't with the old process. And I just applied on my wife's name. I did not put my name at last. They said it has to be husband-wife name together if you're applying together. So I have just, they want us to put everything together. And there's no reason I had to add my name and everything.
All right, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then, consideration of adding a name to a certificate of compliance for Lex Wine and Spirits has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And ayes like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Did you get the name?
No.
No, I said no.
You said I, okay, my bad. All right, item F, consideration of annual events for Cock County Partnership.
I put in a request for the annual events that we do every year. There's actually three. The first one is the summer concerts. They'll start on June the 1st, and they'll end on July 27th. They're gonna run just like they always have. They're gonna be in Con City Hall. And from 7:00 to 9:00 is the concerts. And they're free to the community. So we'd like to have that. And then our Newport Harbor Street Festival is October the 7th and 8th. Again, everything is just like it had been in the past. And then we have December 1st, we have the Newport Christmas Parade. And we did do it at night last year, and I had talked to James. And then we also had a staff meeting about some things, some problems that we know that did kind of happen. And so we've got everything in place for that. So we'd like to have it again at night, December the 1st.
Think you can get everybody there on time this year?
Do what? It was a little bit crowded, but we're working on that. That's one of our things.
Okay, all right, consideration of annual events for Cock County Partnership. You've heard Glenn's presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Say it.
All right, we have a motion on the board for consideration of annual events for Cock County Partnership has been properly seconded and approved. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And ayes like sign. Hearing none. Item G, is report and discussion from economic development on the Buxton software funding.
This is something we did last this is something we funded last year in the budget. And they're wanting to refund it again this year. And so they have come to do a presentation to show, so you have a better understanding of exactly what it is and what it does. So.
Just, just like James said, this, what we've talked about was giving you guys the same opportunity that James and the mayor and myself got whenever we signed up for software. So they're gonna do a live demo for you guys tonight up here on the board and kind of show you what, how the program works and how we use it. We've submitted reports to several folks, like I was adding up MRG and several site selectors that were looking for franchisees in the area in the past. I think it's a great program. It's also is great for to track, in the traffic spending. It'll show you the consumer spending plans on what basically outlines what kind of spending habits are in our area, and then what retailers will match up to that. They've got a very important system. They'll kind of go over that in a few minutes. But once they're done, if you've got any questions, I'll be up here to answer.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks for joining. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Thanks, y'all, for giving me a time to hop in. I appreciate the time. I got a lot going on, so I'll certainly be respectful. Happy to answer any questions y'all have too. What you're, what you're looking at here is a Google Maps based platform that we have built software on top of. There's data layers and sets of data and tools that are in here for users to basically do a few things, right? To help with current economic development efforts in terms of what are some potential tenants, retailers, restaurants, et cetera, that could be a good fit for the community. It also gives you the ability to understand current economic health amongst many of your current tenants using mobile GPS data, as well as understanding, you know, visitation, a little bit more about the personas of people who are shopping within your, within your locations and currently that exist. And then finally, we don't want to certainly discount the ability to look at visitor data, visitor traffic, right? Things like travel and tourism, and where people may be coming from outside of the local market within your area for various recreational activities. So all of that takes part of this. So I want to show you a few different reports that we have the ability to run through. I think you'll find it quite powerful. One of them is the ability, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this on a random report just around the Walmart, just to, to some of the power of the mobile data. And you've got the ability to create geofences or polygons anywhere you want, the nationwide, actually, USA National Access is part of this, this current setup. But this little green polygon right here that's created, I went ahead and sort of preprocessed some of these reports for time's sake. We want to be respectful of that. But let me go ahead and show you what you can do. So that, that little green polygon that you just saw on the map a minute ago ends up looking something like what's popping up on the screen. So what we do is we can set specific dates, okay? And the dates, the data is as recent as two days ago. And it goes all the way back to January of 2019. It's a little over four years' worth of data in here. And it's simply going in capturing cell phone data, cell phone pings that occurred within that polygon during the timeframe that you selected. You can, you can single it out by times of day, as well as locals versus visitors if you want. But ultimately, you end up with a report that looks a little bit like this. I'll go ahead and turn off. You guys know here where the Walmart is, specifically in your town. But all these dots that you see, I'm gonna back out a little bit. This is, I did this for the last 12 months, so this is, this is one year's worth of data. And you can see all these dots are mobile devices that were captured from within this, this polygon during that timeframe, okay? What can you do with this, right? It's quite powerful. What you capture on these, and these are whole locations of people. How we determine that is ultimately capturing that device. And there are algorithms that are based in there that say, where do people stay at night? And ultimately determining where the device stays at night is where they reside, their whole location. So you can see things in here, some basic things rolling on in terms of how far people are willing to come, like what percentage of people are coming from a certain distance away. That's part of this, as well as visit origination. So if you want to look at markets like DMAs, zip codes, counties, things like that, you can do that as well to capture that. And what's nice too is you get two different looks of the data. You'll get visitor data, which is going to be a snapshot of every single household just captured one time to understand the cross-sectional profile of that visitor. And then also you can toggle over visits, which allows you to say, okay, let's take, if somebody was captured 10 times, let's capture them 10 times to get the full understanding of the value of those potential customers that are frequenting the place even more than just once. As you come in here too, you can, you also get personas. So we use a, we use a tool called Mosaic. It's an experience-based tool. It takes every household in America, puts it in a 1 to 71, you need segments. Those are based on demographics like income, head of household age, children present, number of people. But also, where do people like to shop? What do people like to do for fun, entertainment, when they watch on television? How do they like to be marketed to? That can certainly be something that can be thought of in terms of tourism and attracting more folks to a particular area. But understanding a little bit more about the types of people that are being, that are being seen within the Walmart in this case, right? And so 10%, you know, fall within this segment here at 44, which is, which is a rural segment. It's one that tends to be based, you know, within your area, but, you know, rural families that tend to live in, you know, in markets like a Newport, that again are a little bit younger and, you know, are kind of up and coming, right, have young kids and are certainly, you know, active participants within the community. You kind of go down, and you get young families here. You get young singles here. You get more, you know, mature, more senior oriented families here. So you, it kind of bounces around and shows you who are those personas that are appearing within a given area that you choose to run this report on. You'll get some high-level demographics, everything from, you know, kind of household age, ethnicity, to income, as well as education levels, we're all part of this too. You'll get some volume estimates as well, where you can look at specific trends by week to understand kind of what's going on within a specific community. Also, you know, volume by days of week, hours of day, day calendar. We always, we always joke here at Buxton that the day, the, the, the hour of day is great because if you've got inside access to this tool, you can figure out when not to go to the store, not be there in the peak hours when it's real busy. So that tends to be quite fun. And then you'll get visitor behaviors too. The ability to see other places that people are frequenting before, after, or any time they go to that specific location. Now, typically on the top, because of the activity that we see in retail centers, those are gonna tend to be more, more frequent towards the top of the visitors. But you have the ability to go in and pick out specific categories around that. If you just want to focus on grocery stores or restaurants or whatever, you can do that too as part of this, this specific function. Now, this is only half of the mobile data. The other half, this, and so think about this too, this allows you to look at travel and tourism penetration. Where are people coming from outside of our area? Who's shopping within our particular retailer? Just understand a little bit more about that. We also have a separate tool. That's another mobile analytics tool that you can look at to show what is the relative health of, again, tenants that are currently active and open, okay? And I ran one earlier. I know you guys, we've got a couple of food cities there within the network. So I'm gonna show you this. Pull this up. So what you're seeing here, let me fix this. There we go. Is you are seeing basically dots for each one of these. So we've got the red dots are going to be for the food city of Western, of Western Plaza Way. And then the other one is the Eastern Plaza Center. So all these dots again are devices and households that were captured within the time period selected, okay? What's nice about this tool is it's using pre-created geofences that allow you to see what the estimated visits are within the selected timeframe for a given location. But it's cool because it shows you what is the visit rank of these locations relative to the entire network. So, you know, we're talking about two stores that fall in the mid 80s in terms of ranking out of about 116 locations, okay? So you can see what's the health of those locations within the current network of this concept. But again, what I found really fascinating is, and this is not something I see very often, is over the course of the last 12 months, we've had a year-over-year visit, how much busier these two stores have grown. We're seeing 40-plus percent of visit volume increases year-over-year within these. I'm just assuming, you know, you look at, say, the blue location, Eastern Plaza, you see maybe some summer tourism taking place here, right? In July and August, some peaks there. And then obviously around the holidays, right, where we see a ramp up, especially in things like food as well. Again, you'll get that, sort of that daily visits volume as part of this. You'll get some trade areas that'll, that'll show sort of the power of you guys being a, being a regional draw, right? We know that Newport's got a, got a pretty sizable trade area. So understanding, you know, how far people are willing to drive to come and shop at your particular location is part of this too. And then lastly, again, there's visit originations in here by zip code. So you can see and understand, you know, where the majority of the visits are originating from within this given area as well. So first couple of tools that I wanted to talk about. So current economic health, where people are coming from, okay? Good stuff there. Lastly, one last section. Ties into, I'm gonna go back to my scout platform, go back into reports, is the ability to understand what are some retail and restaurant concepts that could be a good fit for pursuit and recruitment moving forward. And I ran one report I wanted to show you as an example here. And I'll talk to you, talk to you a little bit about the methodology. So if we pull this up, I ran this, read a couple of different brands. Let's see, batch report here. What we're doing here is we're trying to understand the relative match for any given retailer. In this case, I just picked Popeyes Louisiana. Kids who know there's not one there. But it's one that did show up to be a quality match relative to the benchmark set that we used. So how does this all work? Okay, let me show you. We've got three different metrics, okay? We have this one thing here, think of 100 as average, okay? We have what's called an ideal customer account. And the ideal customer account is, it says here, how do accounts by deal of households and traders compare? So what we're doing is we're going into comparable markets that have Popeyes locations. And we're using, again, mobile GPS data to understand the personas and the types of people, the types of customers that are frequenting that place or that, or Popeyes. And we're comparing those to their relative density compared to your density within your community. When you see things like this that are greater than 100, that means you're either at When you see things like this that are greater than 100, that means you're either at or above the average number for this given network, okay? So what we're seeing here is we're seeing enough of the right types of people. We're seeing a very strong customer ratio, which ratio is going to be ideal divided by total households. You have a higher ratio than average, which is cool. And then just overall similarity, what is the overall profile that looks, of those households around those Popeyes locations look like? And then seeing again the ideal similarity match there, which is quite cool. And then what you'll do is when you come down here, you'll get a listing of these specific locations that were compared to in the comparison set. So there's some locations here like Oil Springs and Greenwood. I set this to sort of the region, so I didn't just focus on Tennessee, but I think Carolina's, Georgia, surrounding areas that have markets similar to yours. And then these were some of the locations that came back as a quality match within that sample set. And then as you come down here, you'll get a comparison of the profile to understand, again, what are the top segments that align between you and that specific retail? This is powerful stuff because, again, it allows you to go to a retailer and say, hey, I know exactly who your customer is. And based upon the data that we have, it's showing that this is a retailer that's a quality match for your community. So what's nice about this too is there's no limit to the amount of reports you can run. You can find 100 different matches and target those as much as you'd like to then go ahead and make that report and pitch to these specific communities, excuse me, specific retailers. And then one of the notes I heard on the intro too, just as FYI, is the ability to draw trade areas and create reports around specific geographies. I drew one, I'll show you this one real quick, here, just to show you surplus Lincoln report. And I took the loves travel stop that's on one of your agents there, Drive 40. And I just ran a retail Lincoln surplus analysis. I did a 15-minute drop time around this given area. And so this is one of the things that you can do too, is identify where there may be gaps. But not only that, where are there surpluses? Where are you doing well? Because where you're doing well can also be a really good sell retailer as well. Retailers like to co-locate with one another. How many times have you seen a CVS next to a Walgreens? Or, you know, restaurants versus one near one another? Because they know that when you're out shopping or wanting to eat, you're in the business for that. And if you don't find what you want with the defensive location, you're gonna go next door, right? You're gonna go where it's most convenient. So you can pull by various names, codes, so using the North American Industrial Classification System. You can pull what the household buying power is for each one of these categories, compare that to the estimated sales of the retailers within that trade area to understand, are people leaving because maybe the business type is not there? And so I've got to leave the trade area to go and find that good service in terms of what I need? Or is there a surplus? Are there people coming from outside of the area to use our particular services as well, right? In the next case, that would be a surplus. That means that we're gaining. Using a smaller trade area like this, a 15-minute trade area, I see a lot of surpluses. I'm not really surprised at that just because, again, with the surrounding area and all the towns that surround you guys, you're on the draw. You guys know where people are coming in. So if folks are not within that 15-minute trade area and they're coming in to spend their money, that shows a positive and an overall economic health about your community. But again, there's always the ability to sell those people, retailers and restaurant brands on, hey, look at the surplus that we have. Look at the draw that we have. We're drawing from, say, 30-plus minutes away. This is why you need to be here, because there's a ton of value down in our local residents, but from those folks that come outside of the community as well. So, high level, again, want to be respectful of your time. Are there any specific questions or thoughts or anything that I can do to answer for y'all today?
I have a question.
No questions?
No questions. Probably so.
Okay. Well, great. Well, we're always here to help. We've had a good relationship with the county partnerships last several months. And we're always here to answer any additional questions you may have. So like I said, appreciate your times. Let me know what any questions we can do to help.
Awesome. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it.
You all, good evening. Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, now you got all your data fixed for today. You appreciate my attention span more than what I have to do every day. One report you did not pull up, I wish you would have, but I'd ever taken a minute for him to get it run, is in the geofence report, it shows a list of all, it can go up to 100 or 200 retailers and what their potential fit would be in our market. That's what I use the most when I'm looking at it, looking at how we would, how would our demographics line up with a, it helps answer the Chick-fil-A conundrum everybody asks about, why can't we get a Chick-fil-A? Well, that kind of explains why, based on that retailer's parameters and what they look for in a place to go. That being said, what it does also show is how much traffic we draw off the interstate that fits, and we can use that to help sell. This particular comes in handy, number one, is an engagement tool, but also is a closing tool. If we have one that's kind of on the fence, thinking about it, maybe, then we can pull something. If we run this report, then that can help us close the deal with what this, what it might look like. We were, and I guess I should have opened by saying I really appreciate y'all giving us an opportunity to play with this this past year. We still got five months left, and we're talking about this in the budget, so we've got a little bit of time left, even more. But this, the big data stuff is scary, it kind of freaks everybody out because it's kind of scary. Think about it, how much our phones track us and listen. This kind of proves your phones do listen to you, big brother.
If you don't believe you can be tracked, you just saw you can't be.
But I'd rather have access to it and use it to our advantage than not. You know, stuff like this is the trend, is the way franchisees or big corporates decide where they're gonna go in this day and age. Does anybody have any questions about anything specific? Because y'all kind of get the gist or...
One thing just to interject, this is not currently in the budget. And so the proposed budget you have in front of you does not contain the funding for this. That's why they wanted to come today, and that's why we have to address it now, because even though there's five months left on it, it has to be in this budget, because that's when it's going to come due again. And so you guys have a month to think about, do you want to add that to the budget when we vote on it and/or not?
Does the county help with that too, or does this us?
Well, right now, it's just you guys. So this was one of the requests we put in with, when we talked to James about, for the ARP funds, they came in to kind of try this out. And I've not approached them about doing this, but that being said, I'd be willing to talk to them about it. By and large, and the majority of the retailers this program will target would likely locate within the city limits just because of the infrastructure and off our exits. That being said, as we expand this over, renew all these things that are coming up, that's not necessarily always going to be the case. But this tool definitely does have a value for tourism, tracking as well, and looking at the potential market and who we can target from that standpoint. So I think it's a valid, that's a valid request to kind of look into it. Happy to do that, do it, see how that will go. We do have five months left, and I know you guys are still looking at the budget, but I do think this is a valuable tool to have in our arsenal. And probably more recently, the most handy it's come since I've had, we've had this is we recently had a, went and presented to an investment board, an investors board, to look at what they would consider a project. And the demographics report that they were showing within our trade market area and the visitors that are coming in, I think really helped our cause on that one. That deal's not done yet, and I'm not going to disclose, I guess, too much more than that. Some of you are enough. But that kind of big data does help when we're talking to, for projects, investors and developers.
Last year, when we funded it in the budget for this year, when we agreed to it, we said we would give it a try for one year and see where it went. Because as Lucas said, the majority of the availability is going to be in the city. And so we were willing to give you a go, to see, would it bear fruit? For forever, we have been held hostage by the fact that through the lack of annexation, our population inside the city never rose above the threshold of 10,000 people. And for many, many years, and still to this day to a certain extent, but less so because of this type of program, if you didn't have 10,000 people, that was the first criteria that they looked at, these franchises did. And if you didn't have 10,000 people, they wouldn't even go any farther in the process of evaluating whether or not to locate to your town. And this has really hurt us because of that. I've explained that and explained that over the years to folks, and they say, well, that makes no sense because it's the same number of people, whether they're in the city or they're not. That is true, but it doesn't change the fact that that's not what they look at. They don't look at the county, they look at the city. That's what they look at. And with this, that takes that equation out of the picture. You know, they're not looking at whether or not you have 10,000 people. They're looking at the data on who's coming there. How many people's on that interstate? How many people's getting off that interstate? And that's always been our strong point and the thing we've always tried to sell to people. And we talk about how McDonald's is one of the biggest profit markets or stores in the market. Wegels, number one. And so this, you know, they take off what you just say with a grain of salt. But when they look at this stuff, then they believe it. And that's why we gave it a shot, to try to offset that problem we had with having a 10, there's a difference in having a population of 7,000 people in the middle of nowhere and having 7,000 people sitting on two interstate exits that's one of the busiest interstates around. And so that is kind of our golden egg, is we have all that traffic on this interstate that will get off and do business. And we just have to convince these franchises that that's, that they can make it here, that this is not some little 7,000-person town in the middle of nowhere, and all you're going to get for customers is this 7,000 people. And so when they showed us this presentation, which when we, when the mayor and I and Gary looked at it, it was a little bit more in detail. And so we agreed to put it in the budget last year and give you a try. And so this year, we wanted you all to have an informed decision made on whether or not you wanted to continue it or not, whether or not you guys think that it's worth the money. Because it's $30,000 to $35,000. It's not cheap, it's not chunk change. But, you know, one, you know, one good restaurant, you get Texas Roadhouse in, and you're going to get more than that back in sales tax. But now, I'm not trying to push you in any direction, I'm just giving, again, giving you the ability to make an informed decision. So you don't have to make a decision tonight, we just need to know before the next meeting when we have to vote on the budget.
The value proposition of what James alluded to, one of the selling points for me on that, it is expensive, especially for us. I mean, both of our city accounts, a lot of money. But it only takes, you know, one new retailer, you know, that's pretty good ROI, based on that number. So you get a pretty real good one.
Well, I think it shows the city in terms of economic success drives the county, and that's true of any city in county, not just West Clark County.
As a former marketer, I can say that I would have loved to have had this kind of targeted analytics when I was actually working. It makes a big difference. And I'm sure that, I don't know how much having this played in part of acquiring the last two franchises that we just signed up, but I'm sure it played a little bit, when Lucas was able to show that data to them, I'm sure it played a part. But like he says, the return on investment with just one restaurant is probably going to pay for this. So James said he wasn't going to push you, but I'm going to.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you, Lucas.
Moving on then, item H is consideration of a full-time aquatics position for Parks and Recreation.
Counsel.
And just to be fair, I will endorse this, since the mayor called me out on that. Tim ran this idea by Tina and myself, and I would recommend that we do this. I think it has merit, I think it will be a benefit to the, certainly to the aquatics, but also to all our recreation program. I think it will add an element to it that is sorely needed, and I do support this.
And our numbers are increasing. And of course, this person, the aquatics coordinator, will have administrative duties. They will answer directly to the Parks and Recreation Director. They have to have the abilities to face and resolve conflicts. And these are just a few things that the job description would require of them. And that is to maintain Red Cross Lifeguard Instructor certifications, maintain water safety instructors so they can teach swim lessons, and also oversee our Waddix Aerobics Fitness classes and its instructors. There's a, our programs have doubled in the last year, two years. And of course, I'm not a spring chicken on teaching Lifeguard training anymore, or Lifeguard instructor. And so we've passed it down, and of course, some of our staff have gotten a little older too. Jerry, that helps us, has turned 79. And so he wrote the books on American Red Cross that always helped us with our certifications. And so he's gonna, he's gonna try to continue to help us. But this person would take a load off of our administrative staff and put the responsibilities on them. And it's a, it is a funded within our budget for this year through June 30th. Then in '23, '24, we have budgeted for the upcoming budget too. And of course, we need this person. A lot of people ask, well, you need a program coordinator. Well, yeah, there's a lot of programs that we can do, but the aquatics is what's taking off. We have two swimming pools, both of them 300,000-gallon pools. We have to have nine lifeguards a day. We have to have a pool manager for 14 weeks out of the summer. We have to have a, five days a week, a instructor for water exercise classes. And so this is a valuable position to our growth. And thanks for considering this.
Has this been advertised, Tim? Has position been advertised here?
We don't have it yet. That's what we're asking to do is to create it.
That's why we're asking you guys to create the position.
Only the council can create a position. And so we offered to incorporate it into the budget, but Tim felt he needs the position sooner because of the summer season coming up. And so if we just put it in the new budget, it wouldn't have taken effect until July 1, and he needs it in, he needs it in May. So that's why he wanted to come forward and ask for it to be done now, so he could advertise and feel it, and have somebody in place by May.
Okay. All right, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'd like a motion that we approve the position.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the consideration of a full-time aquatics position for Parks and Recreation. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal kind of eye.
Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye and naysay sign. Hearing none.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
And item 10 is consideration of bids for tractor for the street department. Mr. Ben Hicks presenting. I don't think you've heard me, but.
As a bar with me, I have three things.
He's nervous.
Yeah. The first thing, that the street department is asking the board to approve the purchase of a new 6-to-1 05E standard cab for wheel-drive John Deere tractor with a Tiger mower attachment. And this would replace a 2000 and then a 2-wheel-drive John Deere. That tractor is 15-year-old, and it's becoming, having issues with it.
It's hard to keep it. It broke down a lot, it's hard to keep it going, and we get behind on the mowing on the sides of the road, and it was down a lot last year during the season.
And the price of the new one is $143,873.10, and this money is budgeted in our budget this year. And we already have it in there, and it's budgeted. We're asking for your all's approval.
Okay. You've heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. I'll say it.
Pardon me, you second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of a tractor for the street department in the amount of $143,873.10. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call.
Alderman, my counsel?
I can take care of that 10 cents, ma'am, if you'll let me.
Alderman, Duwana Odinger? Alderman, Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman, Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And item B, consideration of bids for an asphalt roller for the street department.
Yes, this is for a new case vibrator, a tandem drum asphalt roller, and it would replace our old roller, which is a 1997, which is 27 years old, and it's about a huge depth. And this is the new style of the vibrator that will compact asphalt better than what this other one was. And the price on it is $52,327.50, and it was budgeted in this year's budget. We have the money, and we're asking that you're approved for purchasing.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the purchase.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of asphalt roller for the street department in the amount of, and I don't see it anywhere. What was that amount again? Okay. We have a motion on board, then it's been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman, my counsel?
Yes.
Alderwoman, Duwana Odinger?
Yes.
Alderman, Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman, Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Item C, consider, uh, motion carries, I'm sorry. Item C is consideration of bids for a used truck for the street department. Ben, you're getting rich today.
We have been looking for a truck to replace the one that we have now. It is a 1990 Chevrolet truck, and that one is 33 years old, and it's seen its better days. We patched on top, patched on that. We looked last year for one to replace this with, and couldn't ever find one, they're hard to find. And we found one this year at Ramsey's East Tennessee Automotive, and it's a 2008, and it'll, it's an F550, and it'll meet our needs, what we need. And the truck on that one was, price on it was $22,500. Now, this one, because we didn't find one last year, we had money in there for it to buy with, so we'd have to ask for an amendment to the budget and transfer that money over into this year's budget from last year, since we didn't spend it last year.
Since that item is not on the agenda, could we, can we combine those two motions?
We'll have a budget amendment at the next, we'll have a budget amendment at the next meeting.
Okay.
That'll be the final, that'll be the final budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Okay. All right, you've heard the presentation, then. Consideration of bid for a used truck for the street department in the amount of $22,500.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the board, then, to approve that bid for a used truck for the street department in the amount of $22,500. Has been properly seconded. Roll call, Tina?
Alderman, my counsel?
Yes.
Alderwoman, Duwana Odinger?
Yes.
Alderman, Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman, Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. You may ask.
Thank y'all for your approval.
And item 11 is comments from citizens. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to be heard?
I think we have someone wanting to address the council on a proposed project. Is the lady here about the Riverwalk, wanting to do the festival on the Riverwalk? She's not here? Okay. We had been informed that a lady was gonna approach the council about doing a festival on the Riverwalk in June, so she's not here.
All right. Is there anyone else? Hearing none. We'll go to item 12, which is, we need a motion for a jury.
I'll make it.